I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order on December fourteenth, 2021, and I'll ask the city clerk to please call roll.
Commissioner Galt?
Present.
Commissioner Guest?
Present.
Commissioner Henderson?
Present.
Commissioner Wilson?
Present.
Mayor Bray?
Present. And please stand for the invocation from Commissioner Henderson, and then we'll do the pledge.
Our Father and our God, again, we come into your presence, and we thank you so much for the day and for the blessings that we right now enjoy. God, we thank you for the privilege and the opportunity that you've given us to serve this city. So, God, we pray this afternoon for Commissioner Galt and for Commissioner Guest, for Mayor Bray, for Commissioner Wilson, for our city clerk, our city manager. And, Father, we pray for wisdom, and we pray for discernment, even as we discuss some of the challenges that we have before us, God, we realize that we need you. Father, we pray for our city, we pray for our employees. God, we pray tonight for our neighbors over in Mayfield and in other areas that have been impacted by this tornado. And, God, we pray that you will forgive us for the times that we have been ungrateful. Forgive us, God, for the times that we have complained, and forgive us, God, for the times that we have lived our lives as if we're supposed to enjoy what we enjoy. God, how we pray that you'll shut our mouths and bring our memories to us, Lord God, that we might consider that we're blessed, we're more than blessed. And so, Father, we say to you tonight, thank you for everything that you've done, thank you, God, for what you're going to do in the days ahead, and we thank you, God, for what you're doing even right now. You are indeed an awesome God, you are indeed a mighty God, and we just wanted to spend time tonight, Lord God, telling you how grateful we are. Bless us, and we shall be blessed in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, city manager, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Mayor, none tonight.
Okay. So, before we get started, I thought I'd take a few minutes and talk a little bit about the tragedy, the, what's happened all around, in particular, Mayfield, which is really ground zero where the tornado struck, but in really all the communities. And I'd like to, you know, want to hear from the other commissioners too about what your perspective is on everything, but I went down Saturday and Sunday and witnessed firsthand some of the devastation down there, so I've certainly never seen anything like it in my life. And I kind of immediately, you know, from my perspective, I think Paducah, McCracken County, our community needs to support and reach out to the surrounding communities, and of course, Mayfield is the closest, being only twenty, twenty-five minutes away. And so, we began to talk about how we can support things, but even before we could even sit down and talk about it, you know, our folks from the fire department were first responders down there, our police department's been down there. Both Paducah Water and Joint Sewer Agency here from this county have been down there in support. We took, we took, we are the backup to their 911 calls, so we were taking 911 calls first day. You know, we're looking for other opportunities really to support Graves County, Mayfield, Marshall County, the areas that are closest to Paducah. You know, as the largest, the largest city in McCracken County, and with McCracken County being the largest county within the Purchase, I think we have an obligation, we have an obligation to really step up, and I know that our community has already stepped up. There's, I mean, there's fundraisers everywhere. I mean, literally, you go on social media and everybody, it seems like, is having some sort of a fundraiser. And so, I think that's, I think that's fantastic. I just was talking, right before the meeting, city manager and I were talking to our police chief, and they've been collecting toys, and they're, I mean, they've collected so many toys to take down to Mayfield, it's, you know, unbelievable. I just think that it's been, it's, the response has been overwhelming. I think, you know, as I think about it, I think, I think the long term, the intermediate and long term needs over there are probably going to be even more acute, because I think we're at that early part of, you know, everybody wants to help at this point, but really, we're talking about weeks and months and perhaps, perhaps years, you know, in, in bringing that community and those communities that have been damaged back. So, to that end, over the weekend, actually, the judge and I, and our city manager, the deputy judge, police chief, fire chief, we all got together and just sat down and talked through what, what might be the long term, the long term needs, the long term pressure points. And I think one of those is, is gonna be housing. It's, you know, certainly, there's a, there's a need for short-term housing now, there's, there's gonna be a need for, I guess I would term it as intermediate-term housing, six months to a year, and nobody knows what the future holds beyond that, but as the largest city and county here, you know, we just wanna begin to think through what that looks like for us, just to make sure that we're ready for anything that, that might come down the People have constantly been asking me, I mean, from everywhere, really. I had, I took a call from someone who used to live in Paducah, used to work at CSI, and he lives up in Dayton, Ohio, and he called, and there was a tractor trailer full of water and goods, blankets, different things on their way down here from, you know, northern Ohio. I've got a daughter that lives in Cleveland, somebody reached out to her up there, they, you know, they want to send a truckload, so it's, it's kind of overwhelming, really, you know, the response, what it's been. I do think that those who, who want to provide financial support, which is, if you look at financial support, you look at dollars coming in, where, where it's, you know, to someone who can administrate that money and make sure that it gets somewhere where it's needed the most. So, today, you know, we've been taking a look at some places where people can make donations, and we're gonna post this on our website, and Pam will get it out for those of you who are on our email distribution list, and if you're not, by the way, we'd like for you to sign up. But, but there's, there's many, many funds, and there's many, many more than this, but these were just some local funds that I thought that I could talk about a little bit tonight, that we could all, at least make us all aware of them. And first of all, there is a Mayfield-Graves County Tornado Relief Fund. That is a fund that goes directly into Mayfield and Graves County, and those funds are gonna be managed by a board made up of Sheriff John Hayden, Mayor Kathy Onan, Judge Executive Jesse Perry, an Independence Bank president down there, and a community member, Cindy Cash. So, it looks like to me, in terms of money going, that that, that is a fund that would go directly into Graves County, Mayfield. Our own Western Kentucky Community Foundation that manages, if I'm not mistaken, somewhere in the north of $35 million of funds in our community for, for the outline communities, has established something called the Western Kentucky Disaster Relief Fund. That particular fund only makes donations, provide contributions to licensed or registered 501(c)(3) funds, schools, hospitals, churches. So, and it's administered by professionals who are very familiar with the charities around this area. So, those are the two funds, I think, that are, you know, maybe closest and most acute, and all of them would take contributions anywhere from $5 on up. The state of Kentucky, you might have heard about this, the state of Kentucky has established a, it's called Team Western Kentucky Tornado Relief Fund. And again, we'll have all these links and this information on, on our website and provided by our communication staff. That, that particular fund is gonna be administered, excuse me, by the state, and will go to all the areas that have been affected by tornadoes, so all, all particular areas. And then, and then kind of a standby fund is the Kentucky Red Cross, we've got a link to a Red Cross. Red Cross is that organization that's always there in any kind of disaster, and I am told that these funds will be directed toward local efforts, so there's a way to actually contribute to, to the Red Cross. So, I wanted to make sure and get that discussion going out there, and I wanted, you know, just kind of communicate to, to the community and let the other commissioners also communicate, you know, just sort of, you know, what our view of, of this disaster. The President of the United States will be in, in our area tomorrow. He's going to be, don't know anything about timing, but he's gonna be touring the affected sites, and I think he's gonna be in Dawson Springs, Mayfield, so that's, you know, that certainly shows the severity, you know, of what's happened. We've got national disaster relief funds coming to the affected communities, which is, is gonna be much needed. So, we're gonna be exploring how we can continue to support these communities going forward. So, those are just some of my remarks, I'd love to hear from, I know some of you all been down there, some of you haven't, I don't know, I'd just open it up to any of the other commissioners that would like to say anything.
Well, I guess, I guess I'll, I'll begin, I've written some notes down, so I'm dangerous tonight. But first of all, I think it's, it's important to mention that Paducah is a unique place. There's never been a need that I've been aware of where the citizens of Paducah didn't rise to the occasion to, to work diligently to meet the need, and of course, that's happened even, even now. I've been in collaboration with obviously preachers and pastors, both black and white, and we have been talking about things that we think we might need to, to do to try to help address the need. I think it's important that we know, and I think Mayfield knows, that we've got people all over this country who are concerned about what's going on there. I've talked to pastors today from Louisville, from Lexington, Carbondale, from Chicago, and even Gary, Indiana, and each of those people that I've talked to have already pledged their support. In whatever way we need it, whatever way Mayfield needs it, that support is going to come. So, I think, I wanted to start off by saying that, but I think that I already know that the things that I'm gonna throw out, we can't decide on today or tonight, it's gonna take some, some more discussion, but at least I wanted to throw it out and get it, get it on the table. The first thing I wanted to throw out is, we already have a gem or jewel in PCM, in Paducah Cooperative Ministry, they are already working to, to try to meet some needs, but one of the things that I did find out today is that Paducah Cooperative Ministries missed food that normally comes to them because the distribution site is in Mayfield. And so, there's food for seniors, there's emergency food that comes, I'm sorry, there's emergency food that comes as well, they missed it today. So, I guess what I want to throw out there is to, it is probably a short-term fix, how can we find, can we find some type of building, some type of warehouse where we can store food, where there can be some refrigeration? They're fine having missed it today because they've had a surplus, but they can't miss that distribution too many times because then it's gonna, that'll create some other food disparity issues in our, in our city. So, that's one thing that, again, I think is gonna require some conversation as to how we do it, but I think we have some buildings around that could serve in that capacity. The second thing that I think that is important, and that is that we have a centralized authority. And what I mean by that, as you've said, there are all kinds of things on Facebook and whatnot, and I think there needs to be a centralized place where people from Mayfield can get information, you know, they need to know that you can go here for this, or you can go here for that, or you can go here for that, and it needs to be legitimate information, if that makes, if that makes any sense, you know? So, I think that's, that's important, I think that's, that's a quick fix, and we may already be on top of that, but I think that, that's important. And then, of course, you mentioned, Mayor, the whole housing issue, I think we already know that that's gonna be an issue, and I don't know if we have, if we can even launch a campaign and encourage people who may have extra rooms, you know, in their homes, to provide an extra room, to provide some space, you know, that people, where people can stay. I don't know if we can even put together our landlords who may have some properties, some rentals, and allow them to do that, and if, rent their, rent those rooms or apartments, and if the city some way can pay rent or pay some portion, I see David, Commissioner Guest, but, but to see if the city could pay some portion of that, to make sure that Commissioner Guest would get his rent. But, and so, those are just four things that I, that I'm sure will require some more conversation and as to how, as to how we do that, but I just wanted to get it out there and let's talk about it.
Commissioner Henderson, was that Feeding America, where they got their food from Paducah Cooperative Ministry?
I'm not exactly sure, but who provides that? But the distribution center?
Was in Mayfield.
Was in Mayfield.
So, Feeding America, Heartland, had a warehouse in Mayfield that was destroyed?
Yes.
So, I know Bruce Wilcox and I both worked with them on Saturday, I thought they had found a warehouse in Paducah, now they could, still could have missed certain feeding, distribution today, because they're just getting back up, they were still looking for refrigerated trucks to bring in, but I, I thought they had a warehouse, I was working with a local realtor and a landlord that had some large warehouses.
Then I, I talked to Mrs. Heidi Sahinrich today, and if that was the case, then she may not even know.
I'll check back with them today, it was Jamie, I've got her in my contacts that I talked to on Saturday and gave her several leads, and I said, if this isn't working, let me know, we'll, we'll start all over, and I, I think they have.
Good deal.
It was districts, it was a large warehouse that distributes to eight counties, so it's very important that they found a good location.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I think Mary Hammond with CBB is working on Paducah Cares website for a lot of information, and...
Well, yeah, I actually forgot, I was gonna mention that, but she's, she's taken, she's tracking the available rooms or hotels, lodging that, that actually have rooms, I mean, it flows, the ebb and flow is, you know, change on the hour, but, but because in the quilt show, to your point about people opening up their homes, we've done that in the past for quilt shows, so we may have a database, you know, of people who might be open to that, everybody might not be, but there'd be a lot of people that would, I think, so that's something we can follow up on.
I think it's actually gonna even be even longer than what that would provide, we're talking housing for quite some time. So, you know, we've had a lot of calls today at the Chamber for apartment openings, so we've been emailing that information out, we also have gotten a lot of calls from throughout the country about people sending trucks, so we've tried to direct them, we've kind of tried to stay more on the business, helping out the businesses. So, I know the Kentucky Chamber and Kentucky Sports Radio, Matt Jones, they have a fund, they've already raised several hundred thousand dollars that would go directly to help with businesses, and so, and then we've been putting out information more specific to businesses, SBA, how to, what to do to set up on all of that, so I'm just kind of trying to stay in that area, and then putting out some of the other websites that need to. But one call I got today is something I think that we should maybe remember, it was a local optometrist that was helping 15 families with hotel rooms, and it was in Metropolis, but they, then they don't have food here, so she was asking if there was anywhere for them to get food closer than having to go back to Mayfield because they're staying locally in hotels. So, I don't know if that's, if we need to send everything to Mayfield, or maybe we need to have some kind of point here for those families that are staying in this community to pick up food. I did want to mention Paducah Power has also been helping out, they've had lineman crews in Princeton, but they've also been helping a lot with the fiber, getting web, the, getting internet back in Marshall County, and today, back to Graves County, to the CFSP Bank that's operating as the EOC Center to get them very high-speed internet back up, and they're ready to help Mayfield Electric when they need them.
Okay.
So, those are the things, I mean, there are just so many needs, and it, it's gonna be years ahead.
Yeah.
I think, from what I've heard, you know, some of the chambers that have been impacted probably lost more businesses than they have still standing in some of their communities as, as far as that. So, we've reached out to Marshall County and Mayfield Chamber to go to their offices, help them staff, make calls for them, whatever that they need to be reaching out.
Are they even in a position to take you up on that yet?
Not yet, no, but the Kentucky Chamber has a, you know, they have a large staff, and they're ready to mobilize people and bring them here, but I don't think that in Mayfield, they still have electricity and, or power and water that I've heard, I've not talked to them today.
They've turned the water on, they just, they've got so many leaks, they can't leave it on.
Okay.
Paducah Water's over there. I, I mean...
Is the power on, though, in downtown? I don't think it is.
No, no way, not downtown.
I think it's gonna be a while, from what I've heard, but I don't know.
He, he was looking at two to three weeks is what he had heard, I have a friend there.
Anybody?
No, I, I was gonna say, I was there earlier today for the first time, and, and as most of you all know, I'm from there, so I have still a lot of family and friends there, and, as a matter of fact, in Caldwell County, too, but it was, I, I shared with Commissioner Guest, it was a very resilient, one of the couples that I took some things to today were, they were high school sweethearts, and so, you know, they, they've been married ever since we were in high school, and they owned a business, and had built a family, and their kids all lived around them, and they were traveling and had to get the phone call that their house and their business both were gone, but it was the most resilient attitude. I couldn't, when I got there and with things, they were, and that, everybody that we came in contact, don't misunderstand what I'm saying, a lot of people are really, you know, down in the mouth and hurting, obviously, but they had an attitude of, we're gonna make this work, we're gonna find a way to build it back, we're, we're still a community, you know, a lot of pride, and so, you know, that made me feel much better about it, but to all the things, so many people are stepping up and stepping in, but the one thing I don't want us to forget about, Mayor, in, in all this, is, as you said, we have an obligation to step up, and a little bit of business, I think I would be remiss if I didn't mention 911, because KSP went down during all of this, and, and I'm, I'm sure you've, you've been brought up to speed on that, but, you know, our police and fire were there, right, you know, and they've been trained with all those things that I learned about years ago with 911, they knew what to do, they could handle a structural collapse, they, they had it all, and, and that was being a good neighbor to me, but I've thought about, and I talked to Chief Laird about it earlier today, if, you know, we, we were operating from one radio tower, and the cells didn't work, it was all radio communication, and they were able to flip over to a channel and communicate one-to-one and, and get their business done. You know, with the new proposals that we have, the things that are coming, we would have more than that, so we would have multiple towers, and we'd be in a much better situation to handle it.
It's a great call-out.
So, I, I really think that puts it front and center for me, that, and I feel sure after experiencing this, the county will be right there, step, lockstep with us, I can't imagine that they wouldn't be, but it, it shot it straight to the priority list for me, because when, they had people that were calling, and I don't want to put you on the spot, Chief, but you're much better at this than I am, so if you want to speak to it at all. I was afraid he's gonna say that, but from what I understand is when they were, they had people that were calling in, and, and they were trapped, they, they were just overwhelmed with calls, and, and, you know, our, our dispatch center handled all that and did a remarkable job, and I just think we need to pay attention to those kinds of things, make sure it's a priority and something that we deal with and deal with quickly.
Yep, totally agree, and it's, it's on the front burner, for sure, so.
Yes.
Commissioner Guest?
Yeah, mine's probably been a little more of a roller coaster, because it was just from my son getting called in from the fire department, got called to Mayfield, and he was letting me know, and anybody knows me, if I'm awake past eight, something's going on, because I, I go to sleep.
And, um, and then from that, he's telling me everything's going on. I haven't, I'm gonna leave names out, 'cause I'll leave a name out that, um, that was telling me that, you know, "We've got three bands coming. One's coming straight to Paducah, and got a daughter in a closet in, in Bowling Green, and, and, you know, with her, with my three-month-old grandchild." And, and it's just, it's amazing. And I, I love the resilience. Uh, I have a friend in Mayfield that I helped him move a tree Sunday, and he has a boring business, and again, I'm leaving names out, but a twenty-foot warehouse that is about five foot high right now, and, and he's just looking for a, looking for a place. He says, "Oh, we'll find something. It'll be fine." And he has, he has rental property, too, and, and, uh, he lost some, and we had to move a tree that, so they could get, put tarps on the roof. And, uh, it was just, uh, and when we were leaving, and I wanted to add this, is that there's just so many good people, um, when we, when I got there, and a guy said, "You need some help." And I, I don't know if they're charging, you know, you don't wanna get. And I said, "Hey, I'm, I'm just helping." He said, "We're just helping, too." I said, "Where are you from?" He said, "We're soldiers." He said, "We just came in from Fort Campbell, and we're just helping for the day. We're just helping." And, and that was just, I mean, very humbling, just to see. They were just there, and, uh, I went to Bowling Green yesterday to, to see my daughter, and everybody's fine. I mean, she was three miles from everything, but just, I mean, she said there's five hundred homes down there. And, you know, as I was talking to Darren today about Dawson Springs, it's just kinda breathtaking. If you go look at, um, Mayfield, and, you know, Saturday, I went to the lake. I appreciate your call to go. But a friend of mine called Saturday, and he had a lake house that had been in the family since the sixties. And he said, "I don't know if it's standing." And he said, "Can you get me there?" And I said, "We'll get there somehow." So I, I took him by boat, and he had a tree laying on it, but it was, he was one of the lucky few. I mean, there was, uh, it was just, uh, there's a lot of people with a lot of different. Just one of the things that went through, I liked what the judge said in the paper today, is, "We're family." You know, the Sid and Tillman against Mayfield, I mean, we're all family. We're all on the same team, working for the, and it was just, um, really just neat to see how everybody is, is trying to help. And I think what you said, that we're gonna need help. Let's don't lose our adrenaline here in six months. We might need more help in, we might, in six months than we need right now. And, um, um-
It's gonna be front and center for some time, I think, you know. It's, uh, I've had, we've had a lot of meetings canceled this week. People, I mean, it just takes the wind out, you know, completely takes the wind out of your sails, and it makes everything else that you're working on less important.
Yes.
Uh, it really does. And, um, I wanna call out a couple of other people, you know, while I'm, I'm, got these random thoughts. But, uh, you know, I went over and, um, Mayor Onan in Mayfield. I don't know if you guys have seen her on national TV, but wow. What a great job that she has done, uh, representing Western Kentucky, you know, as the mayor of Mayfield. Uh, and the, um, I mean, she wasn't, uh, she didn't sign up for this. She wasn't prepared for it. But, uh, she stepped up. Uh, I know she's had a lot of help, but she's been a really great spokesman, you know, for our area. And I've had, I've had, uh, people, people reach out to me and say that. I mean, that was my, uh, I saw her, I've seen her do several interviews, and they've been, they've been great. Um, and then I got a call out, uh, you know, everybody, a lot of people have probably seen it on social media. I got a call out our weather folks, uh, you know, on Friday night. Um, you know, all of us, uh, hopefully, were glued to the TV. And boy, I've never seen as much passion, you know, uh, with those folks, uh, telling us to get, you know, "Get out of the way. Put on a helmet. Uh, get in a closet. You know, get somewhere safe." And, um, so I feel like, uh, with, uh, the, um, being the, the type of tornado it was, whether it was EF3, 4, or 5, I'm not sure. But, uh, I have to believe that that saved a lot of lives, you know, so.
Do you think it might be helpful, I might be creating some more, if we had someone within the city that's kinda designated as our person to be coordinating, like, our efforts? Is that you, Darren?
We, we've, we've, at the City Manager's Office, we began that o- effort Friday night when I spoke. I mean, soon as I knew everybody was an opportunity, I reached out to Mayor Onan, and, and we have that. And then we, as the mayor mentioned, we, uh, with our, our chiefs, uh, Assistant City Manager, uh, the county, we met on Sunday to begin that, and we are coordinating to, to kinda have a centralized, uh, so how we can look forward to, uh, continuing to provide assistance. Uh, and as, as we say, you know, the, the flood, the great flood of compassion and giving, uh, not only during this time normally, but in, in spades, and, and, you know, and tenfold, twentyfold, fifthfold that we're seeing right now. I think, uh, a big opportunity for us, uh, as public servants, uh, and being good neighbors, is to think about the three months, the six months, the twelve months, the fifteen months down the road, and how we can continue to help. And I've offered that to Mayor Onan, um, and our, our chiefs have been in contact with their chiefs over there. And so we are coordinating those efforts.
Well, I was on a call yesterday with the Joplin, Missouri folks, the, those, he was the chamber director, but, um, who has a lot of those, you know, immediate three months, six months, nine months, what they did in rebuilding Joplin. So I'd be happy to share that with you. You may already ha- maybe I already shared it with you, or maybe you haven't.
Yeah, I, yeah, I'd love to see that. We're also through our state, uh, City County Managers Association, and also the International City Managers Association. There's works, the plans, using those resources, um, from other communities, uh, not only in Kentucky that have gone through it, uh, but also around the country. Yeah, but I'd, I'd like to have that information always, uh, including on the database.
I want?
Well, if you were-
I guess.
No. Yeah, mentioned, mentioned just, just briefly, everybody has. And one, again, the compassion that's being shown by the community, uh, is overwhelming. Um, you know, I, I look behind us at our, our Commonwealth flag, and united we stand. I mean, we are showing the rest of the country around the world what, what Kentuckians do. We do stand united. You know, Friday night, you mentioned, Mayor, that, uh, you know, we had our public safety officials, you know, working hard. Great news today, right before the meeting, uh, Chief Kyle came up to me and, and told me about, uh, the last two individuals that, uh, our team, uh, that was over there at the Candle Factory that were able to help rescue. It truly was a rescue. They didn't think that they would be able to live, but not for the efforts of everybody included. Uh, we have some great news tonight, or he did, and shared with it, those last two, uh, are, are on the way to a recovery. So that's exciting. Also, when I was teaching, uh, talking to, uh, uh, Chief Creasy, uh, uh, Sunday when we were over there, he, he made a point, uh, to tell me that, uh, you know, thankful for our help and assistance, uh, with our fire department, our police department. Uh, you know, we think you may have heard that Louisville, uh, area, fire departments have come down. Lexington has come down and helped and are, are taking kind of those roles. But he made a point to tell me that Louisville Fire Department, Department made, uh, a special comment about our team and our fire department. Said that our training was on full display. Um, there were a couple of individuals that they didn't think that they were gonna be able to rescue, uh, little alone fully rescued, but if they were, they were gonna have to amputate to be able to do that. And Chief Creasy wanted me to know and to share, and I shared this with Chief Kyle, that because of our efforts, their efforts over there and that, and their training, and the training for extrication, they were able to not only save those people, but pe- keep them from being amputated. Uh, and, and they came out of that without having to lose a limb or a life on that. And so, um, you know, that's, we, we talk about that, and so that's very special, wanted to point that out. You mentioned about our, our 911, and that's very true. I think this also gives us an opportunity not only to know how we can help, um, going forward and be good neighbors, but, uh, what is our internal continuity of service plan? I think we need to be using this as a learning opportunity as we're going through that for locally. To your point, Commissioner Gault, you know, what is, what does our future of 911 look like? How are we gonna fund that? I mean, all of those, those things are, are, are important. And had, you know, we lost that, what other services could we have not have provided? So I, I appreciate you bringing that out. And then, so that's, those are the things that while we're thinking how we can continue to help and, uh, provide, um, support, we're also using this for a tool internally to look at our operations and how, you know, if we ever, hopefully, you know, none of us have to go through this, uh, again. But if we do, what does that look like, and so we can be ready. Uh, Commissioner Wilson, to your point about a centralized point of information, emergency management in that area is, is coordinating, that FEMA is on the ground and that. And, uh, for, for efforts for the point for those folks in that community, that's where we've asked to be, to direct them as an initial. Uh, but we can definitely help and be in a supportive role, and we'll continue to do so in that. We're also, uh, you know, looking at, um, at, at ways that, um, that we might be able to use public service help, uh, and our, our public facilities help and things like that. And so we're looking for opportunities, solutions to continue to be a good neighbor, and we'll continue to, to do so as, uh, as long as needed.
You know, those comments you make about our fire department, I mean, that makes me very proud to hear that. So, you know, I commend, you know, everybody that's been going over there and helping. I mean, you know, we're, we're so blessed and so fortunate here that this didn't happen to us, you know, and, so.
And, and we had individual team members that were impacted as well, and fortunate all of them, uh, you know, were, are, are safe and sound. Uh, but, uh, and then one thing that we also wanna know is, while we're providing support to our neighbors, uh, I want the community to know that we're still doing our work to support and work for our own community. And, and so, uh, you know, we're not, we're not forgetting that aspect of it as well. And so, uh, and we also, uh, are providing, uh, any social and mental health, uh, to our team members that were impacted if they need that, and so we're, we're offering those services as well.
Um, I did wanna offer an opportunity. Uh, this is a little off, uh, you know, off kilter, maybe, uh, off-center than what we normally do. But if there was any, any comments that anybody in the audience wanted to make, uh, you don't norm- you don't have to, you don't have to come up here and get in front, you know, get on the mic. But if anybody's got any comments, you're welcome to raise your hand. I'll be glad to, to listen. Come on, one person. Okay.
I'm from the city of Mayfield. Uh, lost a cousin over there. But I do wanna say that as the police and the fire department was in their way, I was too. And I would say they done a great job, great job. Appreciate everything y'all have done and, and going to the, but that's it. Uh, that's my hometown. And, uh, believe me, the city of Mayfield appreciate you too.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Anybody else? Okay, we'll move on then. Um, at this point, we've got, uh, new employee introductions. And I believe Michelle and Amy are gonna come up and make some introductions.
Mayor, Commission, City Manager, and City Clerk. Thank you for having me today. I am super excited to make these introductions, because as you know, we've been waiting a long time for these ones, so. Um, I have both Assistant Directors here tonight. Um, Suzie Davidson is the Assistant Director of Recreation. She's gonna be handling our recreation and events moving forward. And she has been in the recreation field since 2006. She most recently worked for the city of St. Cloud, Florida, where she's served as the Recreation Superintendent since 2015. She currently holds her Certified Parks and Recreation Professional Certificate, as well as her Aquatic Facility Operator Certificate. She is also a Certified Public Manager, and recently received her Master's in Public Administration from the University of Central Florida. Suzie has recently relocated here with her family and, um, started December 2nd. So she is fresh and ready to go.
Fresh meat.
Yeah, exactly. Um, Jared Marsden has worked in Parks and Grounds Maintenance since 2007. He also joins us from Florida. Um, they didn't know each other. It's just happened, happenstance. Um, Jared maintains several certifications in Parks and Recreation, as well, including his Playground Safety Inspector Certi- Certificate, and his Certified Pool Operator and Aquatic Facility Operator Certificates. Um, Jared began his duties with us November 18th, so he's been here a little bit longer. Um, and he is in the process of also relocating his family here to Paducah. Both have hit the ground running, and we are super excited for the impacts that they're already having and the positive changes that they're bringing to the department. So I look forward to you guys, um, getting to see them, boots on the ground, and making every effort to improve what we do in Parks and Recreation in Paducah.
Thank you, Amy. Uh, Jared, Suzie, it's great to have you here. Um, I'll just say this, uh, Parks and Recreation, that department is, uh, critical, uh, to our city. Uh, you know, it's, um, it's, uh, citizen-facing, uh, as you all well know. And, uh, we get, uh, we, we get a scorecard from our citizens, uh, every day. And, uh, so our, our organization and, um, uh, the leadership in that department's really, really important. So it's great to have you guys on the team.
Thank you.
Okay.
Welcome.
Michelle?
All right. Um, good evening, Board of Commissioners. I am here to introduce two fantastic new employees we have in our Administration Department. So I can start with Lori to my left. Lori is our new Business Analyst, supporting the Enterprise Resource, uh, Software Project. Uh, we're implementing Tyler products, as you know. So Lori has a significant amount of software experience through her Business Analyst roles with Ford and Nissan in the Nashville area. Uh, we're lucky, though, because she has a passion for public service. So she brought those skills to the Department of Revenue most recently, and is now bringing them to the city. She also has a degree in Political Science from Murray State. So she is originally from the Paducah area and moved back here in 2019. She's married to Tripp Dorch, and they have two adult children, Connor and Sydney, who both live and attend school in the Tennessee area. So we are thrilled Lori is here and very happy to have her.
Welcome, Lori.
Thank you.
Uh, I've already had a chance to meet you and, um, you know, get to know you a little bit. And, um, when Michelle talks about the enterprise software implementation, I kinda glaze over. So I'm glad somebody's in charge of that, somebody's doing something that they know what they're doing.
Okay, and then we also have Beverly Underwood here tonight. Um, she's our new Senior Administrative Assistant, supporting the Mayor and Board of Commissioners, as well as the City Manager's Office. So I'm sure you all have already received a lot of communication from her. Uh, she comes to us most recently from Paducah Bank, where she has over fifteen years of experience. She's originally from Atlanta, but has lived in the Paducah area since 1995. She has four adult daughters still in the Kentucky, uh, still in Kentucky. And she is very involved in the community. She serves both at Market House Theater and as a United Way Reading Pal. So again, we're excited. She has that community service bug and came over to the city. Um, and she's excited to continue serving the public, but in a new way. So welcome, Bev.
So Bev, not only do you have to support me and Darren, but you also have to support this, you know, this band of folks here.
That was generous.
And, uh, you know, Bev's been here a little over a week, I think now. I've lost track. Six days? Okay, six, six days. So at any rate, uh, you know, she's, um, she's jumped right in, and it's great to have you, and, uh, we're looking forward to big things, so.
Thank you.
Welcome, ladies.
Thank you.
Okay, um, we've got Love Awards. Michelle, you're still up, I think.
Uh, we're gonna do the Christmas Parade winners first.
Oh, I'm sorry. So who is up?
Uh, Suzanne and Taylor, I believe, are going to, uh, announce, uh, the, the winners of the Christmas Parade.
I'm back. So this is my very first event with the, with the city of Paducah, and I think it went absolutely fantastic. Um, it went without a hitch, and there was lots of beautiful, um, decorated floats. Um, and it really showed the true character of, I think, the city of Paducah and the team that I'm gonna be working with. Um, so without further ado, we'll go on with our, uh, Christmas Parade winners.
They're gonna want you to step up to the mic.
Sorry. Can you hear me now? So, am I in control of this? Okay, so for the best, uh, the themed float winner, we have McCracken County Schools. And just so all of the winners are aware, we are gonna do a group photo at the end.
Yeah, don't run out, Steve.
Yeah, don't leave. For the religious float winner, we have Kids in Christ of Salt and Light. And for the best non-float winner, we have Melria Balloons. I don't see her here, so we will move on. For the school float winner, we have the Paducah Middle School. Middle School. And lastly, we have our Band winner, which was the McCracken County Band. Is that you again? So thank you very much, everybody.
Okay, let's have a hand for everybody.
We'd ask that the Mayor and Commission join up here in the front so we can get a full, with all the winners. If y'all would step around. And Suzanne and Taylor and Amy, if y'all would also join up here as well, please.
Now we'll have the Love Awards with Michelle. So give everybody like, you know, a little background on why we do this.
And you and her.
Oh, we are?
Yep. If you all want to come up front. So while the Mayor and City Manager are coming up front, I have the great honor of presenting our organizational Love Awards. And this is actually the third year for these awards. And what the Love stands for is living our values every day. So these awards recognize employees who wholeheartedly embrace our organizational values to make a difference. This is also a really special process because it's, you're nominated by fellow employees. So you're nominated by employees, and then we have an employee committee that actually selects the winner. So it's a very special honor to receive one of these. And before I get into these, I do want to mention that while I am up here presenting, our Communications Manager Pam Spencer is actually the one who manages the process. So we're very thankful for Pam and all that she does. Okay, so we have six organizational values, and we will present a Love Award for each value. The first award winner I will invite up is Kristi Gray for Action Oriented. Please come on up. So Action Oriented, our value is we believe Paducah leads through responsiveness, positive forward momentum, and a thirst to always improve. And I'll read a little bit of the submission. So Kristi Gray is Paducah's Payroll Accountant, who has been instrumental in the complicated and time-intensive payroll software conversion process. A portion of the nomination form reads, Kristi is a stickler for accuracy, timeliness, and consistency, which is of the utmost importance for employees and the task she takes on every day in the process of payroll production. She is a problem solver, smart, mature, and deliberate in all she does. Perhaps the meanest implementer, a third-party outsider, said it best when she said, "I wish all of our clients could be like Kristi." Thank, congratulations, Kristi. All right, next I'll invite up another fabulous member of our Finance Team, Melanie Guardian, who is the recipient of our Customer Experience Value. So we believe in providing excellent customer service for both our internal and external customers through a welcoming and respectful environment. So Melanie is a Revenue Tech, and this is what her nomination reads. Melanie is fluent in Spanish, and having her skills in finance has been a significant help in communicating with customers. In addition, Melanie is teaching revenue staff how to count, say words, and carry on basic communication. Melanie has also assisted other departments with translating. Finance is very proud to take steps to be inclusive of the diversity of our community and offer the best customer service possible. Congratulations, Melanie. All right, I'll invite up next John Saxton for our Every Person Matters Award. So we believe that every member of Team Paducah is critically important as we strive to accomplish our mission. And for every person that chooses to live, work, and play in our city matters. So John is a supervisor with our Public Works Department, and his submission reads, John is a hard worker, and he treats all the men and women under his supervision with care. By care, I mean all of his employees matter to the team. No job or person is less than or more important. Thank you, John, and congratulations. Okay, I'll invite up Taylor Morsing from the Parks and Rec Department for our Fiscal Responsibility Award. So as a city, we believe in prudent stewardship of public funds. Taylor is a Recreation Superintendent with our Parks and Rec Department. His nomination reads that Taylor goes above and beyond every day living these values, but especially when it comes to fiscal responsibility. He always looks for ways to get the most done with every dollar that we have for programming. Taylor also uses all internal sources in order to make sure his team gets as much safety training as possible. So congratulations, Taylor, and thanks for your service. I'd like to invite up Claudia Meeks for Personal Accountability. Our Personal Accountability states that we believe in holding each other accountable to ensure our core values are intentionally fulfilled as we strive to carry out our mission. Claudia is our Assistant City Clerk, and her nomination reads that she is a model of personal accountability because she demonstrates follow-through, team mentality, and incredible work ethic in everything she does. Claudia takes ownership in any project or assignment that she works on and strives to deliver excellent work. She not only manages her own time to get the job done, she also hopes everyone around her stay on track, which I can attest to. So that the project gets completed and the whole team looks good. She is the type of person that will pick up the slack and pull the whole team forward. Thank you, Claudia, and congratulations. And finally, I'd like to invite up Jim Scut for Solution Driven. So we believe in proactively working together to discover innovative solutions that meet our current and future needs. Jim is our, manages our Fleet Maintenance Division. And his nomination reads, "The system that Jim Scut has in place of tracking maintenance history and work orders for equipment and vehicles is phenomenal. Jim does great work at keeping records and getting the job done." Congratulations and thank you for your service. That's it. Thank you. That was fun. I will do that anytime.
So while we're on the subject of awards, I want to talk a little bit about a new award that I've, that I came up with. One of the things that I like doing more than anything in my job is, is catching people doing great things. And around here, it's kind of easy to do because we got a lot of great people doing a lot of great things. But I decided to, in consultation, it wasn't just me by myself, in consultation with City Manager and Assistant City Manager, to develop a Mayor's Award of Excellence. That's really awarded by, by the Mayor from time to time to recognize community members who have contributed greatly to make a significant and lasting impact in our community, or an outstanding employee who has provided exemplary service and commitment to the organization. I myself decided over the last, well, I mean, back up just a little bit. You know, we've, the City Manager's Office has really, and the Mayor's Office, has been without administrative support for the last, you know, 60 to 90 days. And so we've had to ask people to step up and, and really help. And if you've been in the office, you know that people are calling, coming by all the time. And Pam Spencer has been somebody who's really stepped up and really made a difference in the last six, eight weeks, three months. So Pam is going to be the first recipient of this due to her dedication, hard work, and can-do attitude in supporting myself and the City Manager's Office during what was a very challenging transition. Pam willingly accepted extra duties, worked extra hours. She really never, never said no to anything. And, and she supported myself and the City Manager. She included the Duke and Duchess Awards, which, believe it or not, we get a lot of, a lot of requests for, and a lot of people talking about them. Helping writing speeches and doing presentations, setting up appointments, following up with people, managing internal and external requests for the Mayor, for myself. And we are like, super grateful, Pam, for going the extra mile. And it's obvious that you really care about your job, care about the city and the success of the office, and the people that are in it. And you exemplify all the qualities, you know, that people should follow. So the first award, it's a really nice little. That's hard to do, too.
I know. Thank you. Thank you so much. I'm so shocked.
Okay, we're going to move to the Consent Agenda. Items on this agenda, the Consent Agenda, are considered to be routine by the Board of Commissioners and will be enacted by one motion and one vote. You can tell that this is the boring part of the meeting. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a board member so requests, in which, in which event the item will be, will be removed from the Consent Agenda and considered separately. The City Clerk will read the items recommended for approval. Would any of our Commissioners like an item removed for separate discussion?
No.
We all good? Okay. Then I'll ask the City Clerk to read the items recommended for approval.
Approved minutes for the November 23rd, 2021 Paducah Board of Commissioners Meeting. Received and filed documents, Appointment of George Cumbie and Reappointment of Jackie J. Matheny to the Barclay Regional Airport Authority. Said terms shall expire December 31st, 2025. Reappointment of Kristen Williams and Vic Patel, and Appointment of Michael Cochrane and Sherry Coney to the Paducah Convention and Vittusiter's Bureau. Said terms shall expire December 31st, 2024, and December 31st, 2022, respectively. Appointment of Chris Hook to the Board of Assessment Appeals. Said terms will expire December 31st, 2024. Personnel actions, a municipal order amending the FY 2021 through FY 2022 Position and Pay Schedule for the Full-Time Employees of the City of Paducah, Kentucky. Municipal Order Adopting an Amendment to the FY 2021 through 2022 Pay Grade Schedule for the Employees of the City of Paducah, Kentucky. Municipal Order Declaring the Real Property Located at 1142 North 14th Street to be Surplus Property, Accepting the Bid of Rahim, Rahim Shabazz in the Amount of $500 for Purchase of Said Real Property, and Authorizing the Mayor to Execute the Deed and All Documents Related to Same. A Municipal Order Declaring the Real Property Located at 1126 Park Avenue to be Surplus.
Property. And the goal is to have a simultaneous reading of the municipal order and the final annexation ordinance at the same time, whenever those incentives are finalized. That way we have a good idea when those incentives begin and when they end, and is communicated with Finance and Public Works as well. To make the Commission also aware, hopefully we do have two annexations in January already lined up. Those are, been approached to our office and planning. So I do think that early winter, we will have some that are going to be moving into the city. So with that, I would be glad to answer any questions that you all may have.
Can you give me an example of somebody who, on this closing cost incentive, you know, sort of just walk us through how that might work, why somebody would, would want that?
Sure. If it's somebody that didn't or preferred not to annex in under the sanitation or the property tax reimbursement, this is an extra incentive to provide to them, just in case they've been on the fence, to say, yeah, I'll make a, submit to us proof of that closing cost. And they also have to submit a W-9 with that as well. And it's just as simple as entering in a requisition, which will go to Finance, and they would cut that check to that property owner.
I'm not sure that answered my question.
So Josh, if I'm, I'm correct on, on that. So thinking about, again, about the closing cost incentive. So you, you have a property that's undeveloped, that sits right on the periphery, but it is contiguous to the city limits. And that property owner wouldn't benefit from, necessarily from the refuse rebate. Would be, have limited ability to benefit from the property tax payment because it's undeveloped.
Right.
This closing cost incentive would be applicable to them to give them that extra incentive, if I understand correctly. Is that, does that answer your question, Mayor, why somebody might want to go that way?
With the explicit intent to sell the property once it is in the city limits. That's where I'm kind of.
So like, if it gets in, they sell the property, they would have access to city services, and they may make the property, you know, more, more available or more interesting for somebody to purchase and develop on.
Or if you owned it.
Yeah.
If you owned it, you're the one getting it. You're, you're annexing it, selling it.
Right.
Right. The new, the buyer won't get that incentive. It is the seller that would get that.
What, what about examples on number, on A, on the property tax rebate incentive? Could that be residential or a business owner?
Yes, it sure can.
So if someone comes in and they have a large business and quite a bit of land, they're paying property taxes, and they come into the city, they get that reimbursement for five years on their property taxes. So we wouldn't, the city wouldn't collect anything from them, wouldn't benefit from anything from them for at least five years.
Five years. I did talk to Leland Hancock, who is the Assistant City Manager in Owensboro, about the different types of properties that they use for up there. And it is all kinds that the City of Owensboro has utilized it for.
That rebate, also for clarification, is just on the city's portion. It is not rebating for others that we collect. So, so, yeah, so just for that to be a clarifying point. And then if it is a commercial, we would still have the opportunity for that to be in the city, also the payroll tax, though.
Yeah, we would keep. So, I mean, that could be, though, still a, a pretty good incentive for somebody, a business, to be coming into the city, which is, of course, what would be good.
Subdivisions have been doing that for a long time.
Right. And we do have a subdivision incentive in place already, as well, that's already on the books. So I do want to bring up, you know, that I, you know, I made the county aware, you know, of, of these incentives, you know, because I wanted, I didn't. you know, because I wanted, I didn't want them to get surprised. And, because we've got a great working relationship, you know, with them going right now. And, and I think, you know, only by working, the city and county working together can we, do we have the best chance of growing our community. So I think, you know, certainly, from time to time, they could get some heartburn, you know, over, you know, over some of the things that, some of the annexation, annexations we might be looking at. But at the same time, you know, we have an obligation to our, to ourselves and our citizens, you know, to take a look at these when they make sense. But at the same time, you know, wanna emphasize that, you know, as we, you know, we're, we're going to be very collaborative as we look at any, you know, any larger annexations, you know, going down the, into the future. So it's kind of a slippery slope, you know, trying to make everybody happy. But, but again, we, I think, I think the community, you know, we need to present ourselves as one a lot, and so we wanna keep that relationship going. Any questions from anyone else? Okay. Thank you, Josh.
Thank you all.
Go ahead and read.
Yep.
Oh, okay. Yeah, go ahead and read it, please.
I propose motion that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing the use of specific annexation incentives to be used for the growth of the City of Paducah. Said ordinance is summarized as follows. The City of Paducah may develop and utilize incentives to offer consensually annexed property owners, meeting the requirements of KRS eighty-one A point four one-two, including but not limited to the following: property tax rebate incentive. This incentive will reimburse a property owner the City of Paducah real estate property tax revenues collected for five years with a defined beginning and ending date, as approved by the Board of Commissioners within a memorandum of agreement with the property owner. Sanitation incentive. This incentive will allow for the city to provide free basic sanitation service for up to one year, up to ten thousand dollars, with specific conditions to be outlined within a memorandum of agreement with the property owner. Closing cost incentive. This incentive will allow a one-time lump sum payment to a property owner equal to the amount of the closing costs with a cap of one thousand dollars, with the explicit intent to sell the property once it is in the city limits, with specific conditions to be outlined within a memorandum of agreement with the property owner.
Someone?
Second.
So I'm not gonna ask you to call roll. Okay, Chris Yarver. We get departmental updates from time to time, and so we've asked Chris to come and tell us all the great things that are going on in Public Works.
Wow. Mayor Commissioners, thank you for having me. I too am from Mayfield, it's my hometown. So a lot of relatives, family, friends. So whatever we decide to do as individuals or as a city would be much appreciated, so. With that said, just a quick update on Public Works. What we've done for the first almost five months, six months of this fiscal year, and a few things that we have coming up, just to put some things on your mind. And if you have any questions, we can get into it, but there'll be things. We come back to you after the first of the year, as far as programs for different divisions, such as solid waste and yard debris pickup and things that we think will improve that. So that's to come later. This is more just an overview of what we do now, so. This is just a general org chart. As you can see, we have four divisions: facility maintenance, fleet maintenance, solid waste, and street maintenance. Just to give a breakdown for each division. Facility maintenance, they're responsible for about thirty buildings. Twenty of them are employee occupied. Ten of them are leased facilities. Facility maintenance also assists with shelters, playgrounds, and things with parks. The bolt dock, the transit dock, they provide the custodial services for the city offices. They maintain the downtown decorative lights. You may think that would be streets, but it's actually facility maintenance that does that. And also the decorative lights on Marine Way, Maiden Alley, Second Street. Ten city-owned operated traffic signals. Ten city-owned operated traffic signals. We're trying to get, we are trying to bring those up to speed. There's one that we're having issues with, and you may have heard about it, in Strawberry Hill, right there beside Paducah Bank. They had to adjust the bar where people stop because trucks making turns had to turn too wide. And bringing those vehicles back where they stopped helped that. Well, those sensors are not in the street like most places. They're a camera. And where they move that back, adjust it where the car goes, so the camera doesn't necessarily see it. Well, to adjust that, there's a chip that we are having trouble getting. So just bear with us, and we'll, we'll get it taken care of. But I live in that area, so believe me, I wanna get it fixed. Also, the facility maintenance, they help with the neighborhood signs. We recently replaced ID signs, street ID signs in the Lower Town area. Worked with Allen Roads on that. If you'll go down there, they have new decorative ID signs, and I think they look really nice. And they also provide event support. Facility maintenance is where the electrical, when there's any time there's electrical and things like that required, it goes through facility maintenance. That's what they do. Some of the things they've accomplished this year, the Sexton House Reballot, they assisted with that. Public Works Interior Remodel, Park Services Remodel, Compost Facility Office Replacement, they've initiated that. The office building for the compost yard currently is just basically a shed that you would have in your backyard for storage. It's been like that ever since I've been at Public Works, and it's time for a new one. So we'll do what we can to get that done. And they also worked on the improving the lighting and probation parole. Probation parole is a facility, a city-owned facility that is leased to the state for that reason. So just some things that they've accomplished. And currently in facility maintenance, the custodial staff, they're fully staffed. The reason I mention that is because through COVID, our staff at Public Works, we never really shut down. We provide every service that we always provide, and they continue to do so. And I think if you have the opportunity to talk to those individuals in facility maintenance, you'll see that you have some really good employees in that division for the City of Paducah. Fleet maintenance, we'll move on to that, where there's over two hundred ninety-eight pieces of rolling stock that fleet maintenance maintains for the City of Paducah. That's just a quick look at some of the rolling stock by department. And, and as can be expected, parks have several, police have several. That's just the nature of what they do. So fleet maintenance also maintains small equipment, such as trimmers, blowers, chainsaws, and tillers. They also manage the fleet acquisition and disposal. Some of the things they've accomplished this year, we've increased the outside service agreements. Going into the beginning of this year, we had one outside service agreement. That's where we make an agreement with agencies, other quasi-government agencies, that they have a need that they've expressed, and we think we can fill that need. It's not exclusive, but if they, if they give us a call and we can do something to help them, we'll, we'll do that. So at the beginning of the year, we had one, we currently have nine. So you think about JSA, Paducah Water, some of those agencies that need our help. Some of the volunteer fire departments, they don't have mechanics, and we have certified mechanics to work on their fire pumpers and things like that. So with that said, initiated a acquisition of a GPS software for solid waste. We'll be coming back to discuss that in the future. They also have had a ten percent increase in work orders this year, and they're paced to compete, complete over fourteen hundred work orders. For solid waste, they have eleven thousand five hundred residential customers, approximately nine hundred commercial customers. They also handle bulk items such as couches, tables. We also have, you know, the single stream recycling. Hope recently you've seen the rap we have on the solid waste trucks to advertise. With the GPS system that's coming on, I know the mayor has expressed concern with debris and yard cleanup. And we think that this is gonna, this is the improvement. This is the process where we become efficient. And I think at the beginning of the year, the first quarter of the year, you'll see the program we roll out and the efficiencies we can gain with this will be substantial, I think. So looking forward to that. They also have the spring cleanup. We had it this year, after not having it last year, I reported on that previously. They do the leaf collection of yard debris and also event support. You, good to know, and you probably realize, events have started picking back up, the permits that parks is issuing. And usually with most events, it touches two or three departments in Public Works with, with most events, so. Just some things they've accomplished, they've assisted with the initial South Side rehabilitation, you know, the cleanup. We've replaced twenty-five dumpster containers. That doesn't seem like a lot, but they're the big metal containers you see at the restaurants, so they last quite a while. But they've also replaced seven hundred fifty rollouts or placed them for, for new customers. So either rollout replacements, new customers, seven hundred fifty. We're currently approaching ten thousand tons of solid waste for the year, a hundred and fifty tons of recycled goods for the year. Compost yard has sold over ninety-six hundred, almost ten thousand cubic yards of compost, and they also provide event support. One thing, the compost yard, it gets quite a bit of attention. Several people buy the products, it's a good product, and anytime you need to dump yard debris. The compost yard, the savings, what the savings that compost creates for the rest of solid waste is where the value is. If you had to pay to dispose of all that brush and debris, it would probably put us out of business. So the compost yard is very valuable to the City of Paducah. Moving on to the street maintenance, they assist engineering in the maintenance program, the municipal aid, the street rehabilitation program. This year, they've already used a street sweeper on the over five thousand miles of streets. The street sweeper has already collected this fiscal year two hundred and seventy tons of trash and debris. Reduction in, the street division is responsible for reduction in contract mowing costs to the City of Paducah, with taking over the landscape and mowing of certain right-of-ways and boulevards throughout the city. And they've also, as I mentioned before, installed, assisted with installing the street IDs for Lower Town. That's just a general overview of what divisions in Public Works is responsible for and some things they've accomplished this year. Overall, I just wanted to let you know, one thing we've created with the new risk management position, we have over seventeen hundred safety and training hours. And if I had to guess, if we went back and looked at history, that would probably multiply anything we've done in the past by seventeen hundred, so. We've just made it a point to create a culture of safety, and I think you'll see the benefits of that pan off soon. The GPS system is always listed at the top of our priority list. We will continue to improve landscape and aesthetics downtown. I'm working with planning for the trash cans and benches and new planners to go down there. And then facility maintenance, we have a new facility assessment, and we're working on the process of improving city, city facilities. And facility maintenance and Public Works will have a, a big hand because of the coordination of what we can and can't do with contractors and the saving, the cost savings with doing it in-house or certain things in-house, so. Any of the renovations you see throughout City Hall was done by the facility maintenance department, and I think you can see that all divisions of Public Works do really good work. I know you may have some questions, you're welcome to ask them now. If you wanna get in the weeds, we can, but, you know.
Sounds like you don't want to.
I, I don't mind, I don't mind. But there's some things that I know that you're, that you're looking forward to hearing, and we are looking forward to bringing it back to you, so.
Anybody?
Appreciate it.
Nice update.
Thank you. From the opportunity I've had some commissioners and the mayor stop by, an opportunity to stop by, I think you'll see the things we used the period of COVID where we couldn't, things that snowed down in the City of Paducah, to try to take care of ourselves and other departments of the City of Paducah, and that's when we did some renovations. And I think you'll see it, it's paying off with employee morale and Public Works and, and things like that, so.
Yeah, let me make just a couple of quick, quick reminders, and we are, and we'll, we'll talk about more detail.
Yes, sir.
You know, going, getting into the first of the year. But first of all, the custodial staff and the facilities maintenance staff, the ones that I come into contact with are fantastic, so. And seeing that you've got two Love Award winners tonight, you know, I can see.
Yes, a third, a third of the winners went to Public Works.
Yeah. I just wanted to call that out for everybody. I can see why you, that, that helps you be really, really successful, you know, having, you know, having folks like that. Is the Sexton House being used now? Has it been renovated and in being used, do we know?
To be honest with you, that's what they're preparing it for. I'm not sure if they're already in it yet, but I think our part is doing as far as the flooring and the inside as well.
Okay. And I don't wanna get in the weeds tonight, but the service agreements that you talk to, the ten service agreements, when, when you negotiate a service agreement, are you involved in that?
They, they bring it forward, and then actually the commission acts on them before any are officially put into place. But, yeah, we have conversations about it before it's brought to the commission for action.
And do we go through a calculation of, of our costs and, and how we, you know, how we prepare those service agreements, what people pay us for, I mean?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
There, there's a calculation. Of course, mechanic is just, you know, we have a mechanic rate and then the parts.
So do we just pass along our costs, or do we, we add, we have, we add margin to it?
Yes.
Yeah, it's a cost plus.
Okay.
Cost plus, yes. And, you know, the thing is, most of the services are, services aren't provided anywhere else in, in Paducah. Not, can't take a fire truck to.
Right.
So.
Right.
It's things like that. So we, we pay attention to those type things to make sure it's a service that maybe only we can provide or we should be providing.
I gotta remember that quote, you can't take, you can't take a fire truck to Quigley. That's, that's a good one, so.
Well, you can. It's just, I don't know what kind of service you can get there.
Yeah, I'm here for a while. If you wanna come see me, I'm here all evening.
So clearly, you know, there's some, I think there's some opportunities to do some different things, you know, in some of the.
Yes.
You know, I'd really like to see us get recycling, you know, up and going. We've kicked that around the last year, so, you know, maybe with commission priorities after the first of the year, if we can all talk about, you know, how we might approach that, and.
And we're laying the groundwork for that. We're laying the groundwork to expand that and being more efficient in, in the routing and things like that, and citizens being able to contact us or give information to the system for us to respond better. I think it's gonna make a world of difference.
You know, some people don't care, but, but there's a lot of people that do.
There's a lot of people that care.
Yeah, you know, and.
They really do, and it's good.
Yeah, it is. And, 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 you know, I think we, we need to think about becoming more, a greener city, you know, any way that we can. And so how we encourage that, how we incentivize that, I'm not sure, you know. But, you know, that'd be one of my, one of my thoughts going forward. But anyway, you guys do a great job in that department, and we're very thankful for all your hard work and everything you guys accomplish.
And, and all the employees of City, Public Works, they know the support you have and the support you give for them, and that makes a world of difference, so, thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Thanks, Chris.
I, I was gonna say this about Chris, and I, I don't wanna. No, 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 you don't have to leave the room. But when you were talking about recycling, and one of the things I learned about Chris a long time ago, and of course, being a former Mayfieldian, you know, we know, we've known one another, but he's always been very frank with me.
But you're a lot younger than him.
Correct, I am, I am. Always looked up to him, always looked up to him. But he was always very frank and honest with, you know, very straightforward and, and would couch it in a way so it didn't hurt your feelings, but at least you knew you were getting, it might step on your toe a little bit, but it wouldn't hurt your feelings. But he, he started out in finance, am I correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And running the numbers was always a big thing for him, and making sure that it worked. And if the numbers didn't work, and this is what I remembered about recycling, and it's stuck with me. If the numbers didn't work, he would say, it's your choice, I'm not saying that you shouldn't do it. I think we should be a green community, absolutely. But keep in mind, don't ask me to make money and recycle. You probably don't even remember that quote.
I, I thought, well, you cleaned it up.
But I, you know, it came down to commission priorities, and it does again. And I, I always respect you for, for doing that, and, and just, you never soft chew it, you just tell it like it is, and I always appreciate him running the numbers. And, and I don't think I've ever said thank you for that, but.
Thank you for mentioning that. And the mayor, he knows numbers as well. It's, we can, we can increase it, we can get to the point where it's not that bad as far as the cost. And I think we can get to that point. You're only gonna get to a certain percentage because we're humans.
Right.
Some of us recycle, and some of us don't.
Yep, that's right.
But I wanna get to that level of what we can get to.
Yeah.
And I think we're on the path to that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great presentation, thank you.
And Chris, you just celebrated, or coming up on.
Oh, no, he just mentioned that I'm forty-nine.
Well, I wouldn't, I was gonna talk about your. You know, so, so, okay, so, but you've spent half your life with the city?
Half my life.
Yeah.
I started on my birthday, twenty-six years ago.
Yeah. Thank you for, for being a great team member.
Yes, thank the city for. Yes, thank the city for, uh it's a two-way street.
It is.
Been good to me.
Okay, uh from here, and uh we're getting close to the end here, uh for those of you who are hanging with us. I wanted to have a quick discussion about where we were with uh our bond funds uh that we started out this year with, uh the, the nineteen point eight million dollars. Kind of what we've uh, what we've allocated, allocated uh up to this point and kind of what's left. So as you can see, from the nineteen point eight million dollars, we pledged twelve point five million dollars to the sports, the outdoor sports complex. Uh two point nine million dollars to the airport terminal. Um and then at this point, unobligated, uh we still have four point four million dollars. Uh did I, am I, what's the two point four?
That's the next, that's, that's for the ARPA funds.
All right, so um now I just want to point out though that uh we're still t- uh still taking bids, uh are still in the process of trying to figure out what it's gonna cost us to redo the, the Cherry Civic Center. And uh you know, we've gotten an early number on that of one point two million. Uh you know, with construction costs, it could be more than that. So that's um, you know, that's a number. And then the remaining funds from there really are not enough, you know, for, at least from an early perspective uh to, to fund uh our nine-one-one purchases. Which means, you know, that the long-term funding for nine-one-one, uh how we approach that is gonna be very important. Um you've got to look like you're
Well, we're, we're talking about two different costs though. We're talking about upgrading the system, which is a capital, correct?
Correct.
Investment. And then we're talking about money that comes out of the general fund for operational costs on a yearly basis, correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
Uh but we've had some early discussions about not combining those costs, but trying to figure out, you know, if we can fund, you know, both the, you know, the upfront cost as well as ongoing maintenance and replacement, you know, of that equipment long-term. So it's two separate discussions, but it's gonna have to occur kind of at the same time, you know, when we get our committee up and going, you know. But I just kind of wanted to bring uh, you know, you guys and the community kind of up to date on, you know, where we are with these, with these funds. Um you know, as it relates to the bond alloc- uh the bond funds specifically. Now, if you go to the next, um this is, uh this, we've got six point four million dollars in, in ARPA funds. And we've allocated four million dollars towards Stormwater. Only half of that six point four has actually come to us. The, the other half comes next year.
Uh we anticipate receiving in the May-June timeframe.
Um and the reason I wanted to have a discussion about ARPA is because there is some flexibility in where we spend that, those funds. And, and so we can uh somehow um allocate some of those funds for some uh, some causes that we have uh in the city. Um organizations that reach out to us, you know, that have a burning need uh for funds. We, we do have the flexibility to provide those. And so I've been in discussions with the city manager and, and you know, there's um uh with six point four million dollars uh being allocated to the city. I think it, I think it makes sense for us to take um a portion of that, a small portion of that and make sure that we provide some access to, you know, to folks who might, who might need some help. The Mayorman House reached out to me um and has reached out to the county and they have a specific need, a specific funding need. And I think there, there's probably some other organizations out there that, that do as well. And I don't think we're in a position to make a decision about that tonight, but I wanted to introduce the idea to, to us and let you uh think about it. We can have more discussions, uh talk about it at the first meeting in January. Um but I um, I just feel like it's um in discussions with the city manager. I think we could come up with a way to take a portion of money and allocate it uh you know, for some specific needs that some of these organizations may have in the community. And we have really total flexibility on it. Uh you know, I'm not talking about um developing another grant program like we, like we do when we go through the budget process. I'm talking about um, you know, probably, um, well, I don't know exactly what I'm talking about yet until we um, until we outline it, you know. But, but I do feel, I do feel compelled to take a portion of that money and, and provide some assistance to the folks with it. So um I'll open it up for discussion, questions um about that.
I, I'll just say that under the ARPA uh funding guidelines, uh you know, final rules have not been vetted or pushed out by the feds. But we do have a good sense of what those look like. Uh the interim final rule is out. And to the mayor's point, uh community um nonprofit organizations that, that serve a community need that local government uh otherwise could not facilitate. Um you know, those, those are one of the, the areas that we would be able to, under the interim final rule. Uh we will have to uh define uh no later than the first of April to submit how we're allocating those funds. That is a requirement of those, um you know. And so uh you know, there are a number of areas uh that, that do align in the interim final rule uh that you're talking Stormwater, you know, infrastructure, those type of things, outdoor recreation, uh facilities. Uh not, not so much indoor, but uh towards uh outdoor facilities is, is another, another area that the interim final rule does allow for. Uh so uh but the body will have to make a formal um dedication of all those funds before April.
So we will determine that. So does that mean that, say, the Mayorman House is requesting some funds? Can it be used to, for operational? Can it be used for salaries? Or how do, how do they?
That is still to be determined. In the interim final rule, it looks like they're looking more at uh facility and, and a cost, a hard cost instead of operational cost. But that uh you know, we'll definitely be able to give you that, that, that information before you have to make a final decision. But it can also be that you, you wouldn't have to necessarily define specific organization. You could say a percentage of your allocation is gonna go to help nonprofit organizations. And then wouldn't have to, a- as, as we look through the interim final rule at this point, uh when you make that dedication of how you're gonna allocate, you wouldn't have to do a specific naming of an organization at that point. Uh that's, that's the way it reads right now.
Would something um like the Columbia Theater, the infra- infrastructure, would that be considered? Or in, and also Hotel Melton, I've done both.
I, I, I believe that those, as the interim final rule reads right now, it's my understanding that those uh may qualify for certain aspects of, of, of uh provisions of hard cost, not necessarily operational cost.
So more work to do on that. Um but I think uh the city manager and I'll be, we just want to keep everybody in the loop and we'll be um presenting, uh bringing something to you in the future. And I would really like to get your input on that, you know, in your meetings with the city manager, your thoughts on that. Uh that'd be great, uh you know, so that uh we've got everybody thoughts, everybody's thoughts on that, you know, before we take any action. So. Are we good on that, on that subject? Okay, um comments from the city manager?
Uh just an interest time, just would like to remind everybody that we do have some holiday closings upcoming. Uh uh you know, our, majority of our departments, so we'll celebrate Christmas Eve and Christmas Day uh on the, the Thursday and the Friday preceding Christmas. So we'll be closed then. And the same goes for the Thursday and Friday uh immediately preceding New Year's. And so New Year's Eve will be celebrated uh as a day off and the city facilities being closed on Thursday with New Year's Day on Friday. So those are a couple of upcoming closings that we have. And then just remind the commission that we do have our, our, our team Christmas luncheon tomorrow, or Thursday, I'm sorry, not tomorrow. Jumping ahead, I'm getting hungry, mayor.
Don't, don't mess, don't mess with my schedule.
Thursdays and uh we're glad to uh support a South Side business and we're gonna host that at Surrays.
Yeah, hope everybody's gonna be there. Okay, uh commissioners, comments?
I might make a comment. I see, I see Chief Laird still here, so I think I'll, I'll make a comment. I saw a video uh today that I think you might need to know about. Um on Friday, the uh Morgan School had a father-daughter dance.
Yep.
And I saw some police officers there dancing.
Uh-oh.
That wasn't the problem. The problem was, there was absolutely no rhythm. If they, if they're gonna dance, they need to have some rhythm. They were, they, I, I'll try. They were doing the bobble.
Were they doing the Carlton?
Yeah, they were. But no, on a, on a serious note, I'm, I'm continually encouraged uh when I see uh that kind of engagement. When I see the police officers uh having fun with the kids. I know when I was a kid, uh it was officer-friendly. And so many things have happened over the years and uh the kids need to see police officers having fun and knowing that they're gonna come and it's not necessarily anything wrong, but they, they can be friends. And so I was just encouraged when I saw that uh video this morning. But, but uh I just wanted to say that to you. Well, we need to uh reevaluate the training.
Uh great job, chief. Thank, thank you. I did, I saw that actually on Facebook as well. I thought it was uh, it was very positive, very positive. So.
It was good.
Anybody, any, any comments down here? Okay, um I think we're, uh we'll, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Where are our Santa hats? I thought we were supposed to have Santa hats.
I thought maybe y'all had quit doing that, so I didn't even ask.
Uh?
Well, I won't
Knew nothing about it, knew nothing about it.
Well, Merry Christmas, everyone.
But I'll correct it for next year.
All right.
Merry Christmas to everybody. Um hope everybody has a great holiday and, and um our, our thoughts and prayers are with uh our colleagues in Mayfield and the surrounding counties. It's gonna be a tough Christmas. Okay, um motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. I'm moved.
Second.
Commissioner Gold?
Aye.
Commissioner Guess?
Aye.
Commissioner Henderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Bray?
Aye.